I would like to call to order the meeting of the Arlington Board of Trustees on November 15th, 2019 at 8:00 a.m. Do we have any blue cards?
No ma'am, no blue cards.
No blue cards, thank you. And we will move to our action item, which is the board will consider and take action with respect to adopting an order canvassing the November 5th, 2019 bond election. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And President Mays and trustees, you have materials with respect to adopting an order canvassing the November 5th, 2019 bond election, which was held Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. The materials include the following: an official cumulative report of early votes and Election Day votes for and against from Tarrant County Election Administration; and two, an official precinct report by polling location from Tarrant County Election Administration. The results of the election are as follows: for, 14,393 votes; against, 7,226 votes. If you accept this canvas of election to adopt the order canvassing the November 5th, 2019 bond election in the district to authorize the issuance of bonds in the aggregate principal amount of $966 million, it would be appropriate to hear a motion to adopt the canvas at this time.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there a motion to adopt the order? Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Chairman, Chairperson. I move to adopt an order canvassing the November 5th, 2019 bond election in the district and declare the results thereof.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So a motion made by Ms. Walton, a second by Mr. Chapa. Motion passes. It is now 8:02 a.m. and this open meeting is adjourned. At this time, I will call into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for November the 21st, beginning at 7:05 p.m. I want to thank everybody for coming out and being with us this evening. We will start our meeting with the open ceremony. Mr. Hogg, will you please join Mr. Hogg in leading the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mr. Hogg, join Mr. Hogg.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruption to those around you. And now at this time, if you would please, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. So the first item on our agenda is appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And I'd like to recommend that the board appoint the individual discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Sam Houston High School.
Got it. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. I'd like to move to appoint the individual discussed in closed session.
I'll second.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Mr. Chapa, second by Ms. Walton. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All those presenting their affirmative, motion passes. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And it's my pleasure to present the new Assistant Principal for Sam Houston High School, Ms. Sarah Henley.[295.08][295.08](Applause). Sarah attended Arlington State University for Bachelor of Arts in Exercise and Sports Studies, Lamar University for Master of Education in Ed Administration, most recently a U.S. History and PE teacher and coach at Sam Houston High School, has taught English and physical ed and health at Bolles Junior High, and has taught English and physical education and health, and coached at Fort Stockton ISD as well. Sarah, congratulations.
Thank you. President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this opportunity. I'm a firm believer that all things happen in God's perfect timing, and so I would like to start by saying that I feel extremely blessed by God's promises and His plans for me, that they're falling into place for me. I think that when you align yourself with the right people in the right place at the right time, then good things happen. And so I would like to thank Mr. Villarreal for believing in me, Ms. Orozco, and all the Assistant Principals of Sam Houston High School who have helped me, mentored me, and guided me. I would also like to mention all the teachers, the community members, and the students who throughout the years have helped me to grow both professionally and personally. Tonight I have my family here with me. I would like to thank them, and I would like to also thank my friends for always loving me, supporting me, and believing in me. I'm excited for this new step in my life, and I hope to be exactly what the students, staff, and community members of Sam Houston High School need to help them continue to grow and flourish so that we can always be Sam Strong. Thank you all.[399.03][399.03](Applause).
Okay, so as is our custom, we ask the appointees to please follow Mr. Kell out in the lobby for a receiving line so we can come and greet you. We ask that everyone, please let the board go first so we can return and get to our business. I now call this meeting back to order. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any cards?
(Inaudible).
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next on our agenda is our public hearing, Schools First, State Accountability Raining. Mr. Drolinger?
I actually see some.
Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays.
If you make your way to the microphone.
The Texas Education Agency has released its 2019 Financial Accountability Ratings for all Texas school district. State law requires that each district hold a public hearing to discuss its ratings and to invite public comment on the ratings. Tony Drolinger, Executive Director of Finance, will present a report on our financial accountability rating. Following his report, we invite public comment on the rating. Mr. Drolinger?
Thank you. President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. I am here to talk to you tonight about School First, which is the Financial Accountability Rating System that TEA has for the financial side of the House. And of course, as you know, it's designed to encourage school districts to manage our resources in order to provide the maximum allocation for the classroom. And it also creates transparency, and it discloses the financial decisions that we make as management of the district. Of course, it is an acronym, and it stands for the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. And for 2019, I'm pleased to announce that the Arlington ISD received the A Superior Achievement Rating, which is the same as last year, and that, of course, is the highest rating that's possible. And furthermore, the district has received the highest rating for the 17 years that the system has been here, so we're proud of that fact. A little background of the system, of course, it was authorized in 1999. The legislature changed that in 2013 and gave authority to the commissioner to review the system every three years and make appropriate changes to keep it pertinent as laws change. And so they've done that, and in 2019, there's one less indicator on the form, so we were rated on 14 indicators versus 15 in the prior year. And of course, it's based on student, staff, and financial data from the most recently completed and audited year, which we're bringing the audit tonight for 2018-19, but this is rated on 17-18 data. They're very similar to the instructional system. There are letter grades, and you can see those here. And the point spread is very small in order to get the highest rating versus losing 10 points and getting the lower rating. So it has become a lot more rigorous over the past several years. One of the requirements of the system is that we have to issue a financial report, an annual financial report, which we have done. That report has to include the evaluation from TEA for School First for the current year. It has to have last year's evaluation. And then we have to disclose certain transactions between the board and the district and the superintendent in the district. And that report has been issued. And then we also are required to hold a public hearing, and that's what we're doing this evening. And we have to make that report available to anybody that wants to see that. And so we will have that published on our website tomorrow after the hearing this evening. We have copies here tonight for anybody that wants one. And then if anybody would like a hard copy, they just need to contact the finance office, and we would be happy to provide a copy for them. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and also it would be appropriate to invite public comment.
Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Will Banks?
Mr. Drolinger and everyone on the staff, kudos to you guys for the outstanding rating yet again. I did notice you were 98 out of 100, so I'd be remiss in pointing out, what could you have done better? It looks like on item eight, it looks like our ratio of long-term liabilities to our assets was the one thing that we were dinging two points on.
Yes, that's correct.
Based on, you mentioned, we just completed the 2019 audit. If you were to venture a guess, if you were a betting man, where do you think we would -- where do we stand on that ratio?
Well, based on --
Or about the same?
I think we'll be about the same. Based on the math on that ratio, what it does is it, of course, takes the total of long-term liabilities and it divides by the total assets. What the math came out to for us was a .669. In order to get a 10, we would have had less than a .60. So very, very small margins is what we're talking about on that. And I have not done the math on this year's audit report yet, but I am going to guess that it's going to be very similar to last year.
Maybe not, but not at risk of going down?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So again, kudos to you guys. It's just, this is again further proof to the great financial stewardship that we have in this district, and you guys should be proud of this.
We are, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Dr. Raish?
Thank you, President Mays. Mr. Drolinger basically wanted to say, like my colleague, thank you. Thank you to you, Ms. Powell, the entire finance team, as I am very happy to be able to stay year in and year out. You guys knock it out of the park. You do such great things for this district internally, externally, for our community, such great stewards of the tax dollars and revenues that we receive to fund the opportunities and achievement potential for our students. And that has definitely shown, not just in this, which is wonderful information from the TEA, but it's also a validation to be able to go out to the community and have that community's trust in this district because of being financially prudent. And so 98, 99, 97, I'm good. It all works. So thank you again very much for consistently performing at such a high level.
Thank you. I'd have to say it is a team effort. Any auditor will also tell you that the tone starts at the top, and so that starts here. And the tone that y'all set for us, and then of course through Dr. Cavassos and Ms. Powell, it just filters down from there, so thank you for that leadership.
Thank you, Dr. Raish. Thank you, Mr. Drolinger. Really appreciate the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any cards, Ms. Benjamin?
No ma'am.
For any public? Thank you. So we have no comment cards from the audience, so the public hearing on Schools First, the State Financial Accountability Rating System is now closed. Okay, next on our agenda is open forum for agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any cards?
No ma'am.
Okay, no cards. We move on. Next item on the agenda is action item. Consider approval of fiscal year 2018-2019 independent audit. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring for your approval the 18-19 independent audit, and the audit committee has reviewed this, and the board has had an opportunity also at dinner meeting to hear from the auditors. So at this time, I'll invite Ms. Powell to lead the discussion on this topic.
Thank you, President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos. We are required by state law to have an independent audit conducted every year and to publish financial statements and report those to the state of Texas. And so Whitley Penn is our independent auditor and a partner with Whitley Penn, our engagement partner. Selena Sarasiras is here this evening along with one of her staff members, Erin Angel. And we're going to invite Selena to come to the podium and give a very, very high-level overview of the information that she shared with us at the dinner meeting.
Thank you very much, President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for having me here to present the results of the fiscal year 2019 audit. We review various areas. We really focus on internal controls so that we can design our test, their nature and the extent of those tests. But I am pleased to report that you have earned, the district has earned, an unmodified opinion over the financial statements. Because you do spend more than $750,000 in federal funds, we're required to select, federal major programs for testing. This year, we selected Title I and Title III, Part A, and we're also issuing an unmodified opinion on those programs. Our opinion covers the financial statement items, but we are also required to report any internal control issues over areas that have a direct and material effect on those financial statements. So we've met with various departments such as HR, Payroll, Procurement AP, Information Technology, any other area that collects cash, teams coordinator for any attendance changes, as well as with finance for the financial close and reporting process. We have no findings to present or to report, excuse me, over internal controls and no compliance findings, either whether state or federal. Your government-wide financial statements reports the total assets and liabilities. The majority of your assets are in capital assets at $642.8 million. Your total liabilities are about $1.53 billion, and the majority of that is in your bonds payable at about $840 million. You also have your net pension and net OPEB liabilities that are included in these figures as well. If we speak to the general fund revenues and expenditures, that's what you're accustomed to seeing on a monthly basis. You adopt a budget on an annual basis and amend it throughout the year. Your total revenues were $521.2 million, a slight increase from $518.3 million in the prior year. And the majority of your revenues come from state aid and property taxes. Your general fund expenditures were $514.8 million, with the majority of your funds spent on instruction-related services at 64% or $328.9 million. If we compare the actual results to the final amended budget, you were under budget in expenditures, and you exceeded your budget when you look at revenues. You did decrease fund balance by $3.9 million. Your overall expenditures decreased by $300,000 from the prior year, and you have an ending fund balance of $198 million with unassigned fund balance of $193.5 million. That unassigned fund balance is critical because that's what's available for you for appropriations. And if you look at that fund balance and compare it to the level of expenditures or the expenditures you had in the current year, that fund balance equates to 137 days of operations, meaning that if all revenues were to cease and you continue to spend at this level, the fund balance would last about 137 days. Optimal per TEA is 90 days. The minimum is 30 days or $42 million, so you definitely meet the optimal fund balance that both GFOA and the TEA require or recommend. Child nutrition program and debt service funds are also two programs or funds that you adopt a budget on an annual basis. You added $1.4 million to the child nutrition program, and you have an ending fund balance of $15.5 million. The debt service fund increased by $2.4 million. And remember, there is a levy to make those principal and interest payments on an annual basis. The ending fund balance was $32.9 million as of June 30th, 2019, and in August of 2019, you had to turn around and make a $15.9 million interest payment that was due shortly thereafter. Any questions for me? So again, clean opinion, so kudos to your management.
No question. That's it. Yes, please. Well, yeah, but your name's not here, so just turn your mic on. There you go. Thank you. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. Ms. Saras and Ms. Angel, thank you so much for all your work as a chair of the audit committee. It's hard to summarize this entire book
Right.
into that, and that's what you've done. But this is, the external audit's one of the most important things we do because our job as trustees in the name is to protect the taxpayer dollar. And that is what our external audit does. It's very critical for us to make sure, as a district, we remain on the strong financial path, but also our processes and systems that are in place are also not creating undue risk
Right.
for us, and that is what your job is to do, and I appreciate it. I appreciate, especially coming back with an unmodified
Yes.
opinion, but I appreciate even more if there are opinions, which there aren't this year. We've had some small ones in the past, and we correct them. But I really appreciate hearing that it's not an unmodified opinion and things are running as we expected. I thank you, Ms. Angel, I thank the entire Whitley Penn team
Thank you.
that works on this, but also especially all of our staff, because it does take a lot of time out of staff. They're coming in, everyone gets nervous when the auditors come in, it's just part of your
Right.
job and career, but it's a good thing from what we're doing. And I appreciate y'all keeping the main thing focused on there to really show us where we're going. So with that, I would more than be willing to make a motion to approve the external audit as reported.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Mr. Hogg, a second by Ms. Walton. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present in affirmative, the motion passes. Once again, thank you very much, Whitley Penn. Thank you very much to our staff here at AISD. Thank you to our board audit committee, which is chaired by Mr. Hogg, also member Polly Walton and Melody Fowler. Thank y'all very much, appreciate it. Next on our agenda, action item. Consider resolution to cast votes for Tarrant Appraisal Board of Directors. Ms. Powell?
Thank you, President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos. Each appraisal district across the state is governed by a board of directors that is comprised of five individuals, and those individuals serve two-year terms, and the two-year terms begin in January 1st of every even-numbered year. And the Texas Property Tax Code prescribes the method in which the election of those boards of directors is supposed to occur. And so you will recall that we were notified by the Tarrant Appraisal District about a month and a half ago that it was time to begin that election process for the next two-year cycle. The terms for their current board members all expire December 31st of this year, and the new term begins January 1st of 2020. So we were notified that we had an opportunity as a taxing entity, Intad, to nominate individuals to that board. The Board of Trustees voted in October to nominate Mike O'Donnell to represent us and other taxing entities in Tarrant County on the Tarrant Appraisal District Board. And so we've submitted that name. There are nine other individuals, so a total of 10 individuals who have been nominated by taxing entities that work with TAD for the Board of Directors. So now then, we've received a letter from Tarrant Appraisal District notifying us that we have, as a district, 450 votes that we can cast on one or more individuals who have been nominated to the Board of Trustees. Our allocation of votes is based on the percent of our tax levy to the total tax levies by all the TAD entities. And so our levy represents about 9% of the total, so we have 9% of the 5,000 votes that are available, so 450 votes. So this evening, we bring back a recommendation to the board that the board cast all 450 of those votes, again, for Mike O'Donnell to serve the next two-year term as a director on the TAD Board of Directors.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Dr. Raish?
Thank you, President Mays, and thank you, Ms. Powell, for laying that out very well. And as we have in the past, feel that Mr. O'Donnell has done a very good job with our trust in him. And with that, President Mays, I would move that we approve this resolution, which states we, as the governing body of the Arlington ISD, have been advised by the Chief Appraiser of Tarrant Appraisal District that we are entitled to cast 450 votes for the following nominees of the Board of Tarrant Appraisal District. With those names given, we do hereby resolve an order that the Arlington Independent School District cast and does hereby cast its votes as follows: all 450 votes for Mr. Mike O'Donnell.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Dr. Raish, a second by Mr. Will Banks. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present in affirmative, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Powell, and thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, once again for representing us. Before I move on to the next discussion action item, I just have to stop and say, it is so nice to see the students out in the audience. Y'all do not have to tell us why you are here, we are just happy to have y'all. It's very nice to look out in the audience and see our students out here. Thank y'all.
Why would you think they came for any other reason than just to serve?
Of course. But y'all are welcome to come back anytime, but I just wanted to say thank y'all very much for being here. It really is nice to see y'all out in the audience. Okay, discussion action item. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring the 2020-2021 school calendar for the board's consideration. The Board Finance and Academics Committee has reviewed this calendar. As you recall, we developed a two-year calendar two years ago, and so this is the framework, and this is aligned to that framework. And so Dr. Hill will present the information about the school calendar proposal.
So good evening, President Mays, board members, and Superintendent Cavassos. As mentioned earlier, we are here to discuss the 2021 school calendar. I want to start by recognizing the teachers, the parents, the staff, and the representatives from the teacher organizations that were a part of this calendar committee. Again, this has been a two-year labor almost. This same committee met last year and presented the 19-20 calendar, and at that time, you all approved the framework for the 2021 school calendar. And so what we've done in that framework and in working with developing the calendar is that the next year's school calendar is a mirror of the current year, which has seven days at the beginning of the year for teachers and district staff to gear up for the school year. We have a staff development day in October and a staff development day in April. We have a teacher work day or teacher prep day at the beginning of the school year in January, beginning of the second semester in January, and we have another one at the end of the year in May. We have the full year, a full week for Thanksgiving break, the full two weeks for winter break, and then spring break is always the second full week in March. And then we'll end the school year in May. The proposal that we have for you today brings one slight change in that we would have four exchange days now instead of two, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move along. As we got through this process, we started to develop the calendar. The legislature passed Senate Bill 2073, which relates to a potential reduction The legislature passed Senate Bill 2073, which relates to a potential reduction in teacher contract days. And what that says in, in simple terms is that if students go, go to school less than 180 days, then teachers can, teacher contract can be reduced proportionately without reducing teacher pay. And so we've had a lot of discussion about that internally, administration, we had discussion with the calendar committee. Dr. Wertz has presented to you some information about what the possibilities are with some of the unknowns for House Bill 3, and so we had that consideration as well. Again, teachers are on 187-day contract right now, students attend 174 days. There are some unknowns about what's the requirements for House Bill 3 is with regarding to the reading academies and the professional development that goes along with that. And so all of that was, was considered when we talked about whether we would look at reducing the, the teacher contract days. So you have, you can't really see this, but you have at your, at your place a draft of the 2021 school calendar, which is up for consideration tonight. And we had recommended that you approve that calendar. Again, the only difference being, instead of two exchange days, now we would have four exchange days, and the October 9th and the October 12th dates that normally would have been professional development, they would now be exchange days. Keeping the contract days the same, it doesn't change anything for students. Again, this respects the House Bill, the unknowns of the House Bill 3 requirements, and it provides 24 hours of exchange time versus the 12 in the past. We would allow, or we would anticipate that the 12 hours, the additional 12 hours would be campus-specific, and that campus leadership with their other leaders on the campus can identify what they want to work on and focus on for those 12 hours, and then the traditional 12 for the academic focus from the district. That being said, that's what the recommendation is, and we'll be happy to entertain any questions about it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hill. Ms. Walton. Press it again, thank you. Ms. Walton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did, I have one quick question. March, you said that spring break would be the second full week in March, and it's a week later than that.
And so what we try to do is, we try to align with TCC, UTA, and, and we would count, really, the week starts on a Sunday. And so if you look, the 14th would be the second, the second full week.
And, and we think that's what UTA and TCC and everybody are going to do? You've confirmed it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, President Mays. Mr. Hill, I heard lots of positive response from teachers by having those extra days on the front side that we added. So now we're at, instead of in the past, we had five days, now we have seven days on the front side of teachers. Did the calendar committee discuss that and talk about that that was a positive, or what was the response from the calendar committee?
We did, we talked about that, and there was a lot of positives about that. If you recall, when we were, had that opportunity back to, to develop the current calendar, that was a lot of the conversation about, we want more time before we get into PD so that we can just start, get classrooms back in order, get procedures down, and get, get back in acclimated before we actually got into PD. And so that was, that was received well from informal conversations that we got for both teachers and principals.
Perfect, that's good to hear. Let me ask, I mean, I'll be honest, I heard less, listen, someone always complains about the calendar, no matter what happens, right? But I heard less complaints about the calendar this year than I've probably heard in any of my years past. So I think that says a lot about the calendar. Let me ask, are y'all, we created this calendar two years out, do we have now the 2021, 2022 calendar reviewed by that committee already?
Well, what we would anticipate would be asking for that same permission to basically use this framework to roll forward another two-year calendar. That would be the idea.
I, I think that's a great model that we started. I think we should continue that, to have calendars, in essence, they still have to be approved the year before, but we have a tentative calendar the year before. Now let me ask one question. I did get a fair amount of questions over this, because November 3rd of this year, 2020, might be a little chaotic, as it's a very large election year. And I, we've gotten the questions before in the past, and I know we've discussed it. Was there any concern over safety of our students on Election Day, where we do use multiple sites within our district as polling locations? And on this day, where there are, you know, every other year, every four years especially, there are major lines there, and so I've, I've definitely had some parents say, other districts are giving that day off on Election Day to do that, and I see some benefits of that. I also see some benefits of, I know a lot of our teachers use it as a learning time during that day to understand that. Was there any discussion with that, with the calendar committee?
We didn't go into much detail about that. Of course, there's, when you have those major election years, it's bigger than normal. But we do have elections at our schools on a regular basis, and, but again, to the volume that what we would anticipate in a November 2020, I think we would be, be able to ensure with safety, security with PD and our security team to be able to address that issue.
And Ms. Hill, this is in the first election we've held at our campuses, is there any concern you've had in the past over student safety during Election Days?
No, because again, those campuses were, are, they're polling sites, they're used to it, we know about it well in advance, we prepare for it, we, it's just, it's almost been our standard that we just, just do that.
And I appreciate that. And I think sometimes the learning tools that can be brought on by showing that is a lot. I would ask staff to please make sure you, we are planning far enough in advance for that school safety of, of that day of when we're attending. Other than that, I, I think this is a good calendar.
Mr. Chapa, just one moment, just want to piggyback a question he just had. So if we continue to move forward with the ability to vote anywhere that you choose within the county, will our students be allowed to vote in their school on Election Day if they choose to?
If they're registered voters.
If it's a polling site? Right, if it's a polling site? Okay, thank you. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. And I was actually going to make a point related to that too, which is now that because the vote centers exist and you can vote at any polling location, our teachers who are registered voters in Tarrant County can now vote at their campus too on those days. I know that there was some concern about, it is going to be a busy election day, there are going to be long lines, and they're not getting out of school until potentially late, and then having to go stand in a long line. So have the ability, for those that are at a polling location, to do that at their campuses. I just had one question, and it was related to the composition of the committee. I noticed there were several teachers on there, several representatives of our teacher associations, which are always careful to include those on our committees because we value their feedback. And, and my understanding from your presentation is that they are in pretty much total agreement with the calendar as it's set forward here.
There was some, yes, there was agreement with that, that we had a lot of dialogue about the entire calendar, but before we left there, we, we got consensus and support to what's presented tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Reich.
Thank you, President Mays. I think, most of my questions were covered by Mr. Hogg and Mr. Chapa. Thank you for putting this together. Just a little bit of, I guess, clarity that I'm seeking, well, before I do that, there's also on the vote centers, there's a possibility that schools won't be election places, polling places. The county is talking about it, we'll see what Tarrant County elections works out. But either way, I do feel very strongly in support of this district's ability to, to maintain safety and order for, for our students. It's gone very well in any year that I've seen. So with regard to the, the next steps in looking at another, basically, two-year draft, that combined with the uncertainties of HB3, which has to be woven into that planning, what, what do you look at, or what do you think is the likely timetable for that to happen? And would that be with the current calendar committee? Would you reform the committee membership? And at what time would that work begin and conclude to be brought back to the Board?
So I would anticipate that we would be getting the committee back together, or eight committee back together, probably next fall.
Okay.
Early fall to bring the recommendation about this time, next fall, for a two-year look ahead.
Okay.
And I would anticipate, you know, potentially a different committee, because this committee, they've been serving for close to two years now, so.
Right. And I know, part, part of that, I would think, is because of, of the uncertainty with HB3, and we've got to see what flush, what gets flushed out there. I know their original intent was to be able to have pretty much every year approval of a calendar that would be from not the next calendar year, but the one after that. So for next year, we may get more angst maybe from, from individuals, because we're, we're just then approving the calendar for the next year, which is what we had worked to try to avoid in, you know, up to this point. So I would, I would hope that it, with HB3, that all those issues are resolved in such a fashion that with future legislative sessions, who knows? But hopefully, we don't have that situation, so that on an annual basis, we can just come to approve the next, you know, two years' worth, essentially. I think that's a great, a great benefit for our staff, that they, they showed very much appreciation for over the past, when we first went to this move. So thank you very much, and, and thank you to the committee folks that are here. I appreciate your time. And it is really important, the, the purpose of this calendar is all about student achievement. It's an academic calendar, and that's always first and foremost on everybody's mind, so I appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Ms. Walton. Okay. Welcome back, Dr. Reich.
Yeah, sorry. And also, with seeing this as a discussion action item, in, in, after everyone else has had questions answered, I, I would like to move that we approve this calendar as presented.
Thank you. Ms. Walton.
Thank you. Oh, I'll, I'll second it. And then can I speak? Okay. I just want to say, Dr. Hill, this comes closest to a perfect calendar that I've ever seen, because, because October the 31st falls on a Saturday. And for all young students and teachers of those young students, there is going to be celebration that Halloween will be on Saturday next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Dr. Reich, a second by Ms. Walton. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All in favor, vote in the affirmative. Calendar passes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hill. Thank you very much to our teachers, to the parents, to the staff, to our teachers organizations for helping put this calendar together. Also want to thank my Board Finance and Academics Committee chaired by Dr. Reich, also members Mr. Chapa and Mr. Willbanks. Thank you. So next on our agenda is items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn? Hmm, I wonder. Oh, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. I, at this time, would ask that consent agenda, consent agenda item A be withdrawn to, for separate consideration.
Thank you. So tonight, we will be considering the items listed on your agenda under consent items. Ms. Powell.
President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos, we only have one bid on the agenda this evening, and so that bid has been pulled for separate consideration. So it would be appropriate for the Board to vote on the remainder of the consent agenda before we consider it.
Okay. So is there a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of consent item number A? Ms. Walton.
We accept the consent agenda items minus agenda item A for approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Ms. Walton, second by Ms. Fowler. Are there any discussions? Seeing none, please vote. All in the affirm, all present in the affirmative, vote yes, thank you. Now we will discuss the consent items that were withdrawn. Item number A, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. I ask that item A be considered separately, so that I may abstain on the vote, given a potential conflict of interest with one of the potential vendors.
Mr. Hogg.
Yeah, Ms. Mays, President Mays, at this time, I'd make a motion to consider item A, consider bid instructional materials supplied service for residers and consumer items for approval.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Hogg, a second by Dr. Reich. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion passes, one abstention, six yeses. Okay, we will continue with the discussion item to during 2020 interim legislative agenda. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring for your consideration, discussion, 2020 interim legislative agenda. This is work that our legislative consultant, Ms. Powell, and our Governance Committee has been working on. And this is an opportunity for us to solidify some of our priorities as we visit with our legislators and others across the state. So at this time, Ms. Powell, go over.
Thank you, President Mays, board member, Dr. Cavassos. So as we all well know, the state legislature convenes into session once every two years in odd-numbered years, and the period of time in between those sessions is referred to as the interim period. And a lot of work actually takes place during that, during those interim periods. There are interim charges that are issued from the Lieutenant Governor to the Senate and from the Speaker of the House to the House of Representatives to consider various topics during that period, reports and recommendations to the legislature, usually just prior to the new session beginning. So the 86th legislature met this past spring, they actually adjourned in late May. The 87th legislature will convene in January of 2021, and so we're currently in that interim period between the 86th and the 87th sessions. So during this period of time, it's important that we still work with our legislators to educate them on those things that are priorities for our district. And so we do that, we create the framework for doing that by creating a, an interim legislative agenda. So we have worked with the Board Governance Committee, as Dr. Cavassos mentioned, and there are various folks from within the administration that have had a hand in drafting those things that are priorities to us. Out of the academics and accountability area, Dr. Wertz, Dr. Barlow have had input, Dr. Hill has had input on the safety and security aspect, the finance team has had input on the finance area, and also Dr. Wertz's area has had input on the pre-K item. And so we have compiled a draft agenda, and we have presented it to the Governance Committee for input. They have also made some changes and added some things to our agenda. Our legislative consultant with Hillco Partners has had some input on this, just helping us with wording and, and what have you, as we have worked through this draft. So this evening, we present this to you for consideration, for discussion, and we'll bring this back on December 12th for action. Once the Board actually approves the agenda, then we will begin to engage our legislators in meetings to share these priorities with them. So you have in your, in your packet for tonight, a copy of that draft legislative agenda, and we have put it on the screen this evening. I'm mainly just going to talk about those things in that very first section, the priority section. The details of these items are down below in separate sections, and we can certainly go through the detail as you all want to. But it's our desire that, that the legislature monitor the way TEA implements House Bill 3 and the specific rules. III and the specific rules that the agency creates and the regulations they create around those provisions of House Bill III, to make sure that those rules align with the legislature's intent. It's also our priority that, that the legislature study or have TEA study and then recommend solutions to sustain House Bill III provisions, including different revenue sources that they can use to continue buying down the tax rate as they have prescribed to do within House Bill III. We also have as a priority that the legislature track and report on the correlation of poverty to state accountability ratings that are assigned to districts and to campuses. That's been a, a topic of ongoing concern by districts across the state. And then that the legislature continue to look for opportunities to allow districts to earn college career military readiness outcome points within the accountability system to assist with ratings and to align the CCMR outcomes bonus that is part of the House Bill III bill to that point system. And we also have as a priority that, that the legislature study and recommend legislative solutions and appropriate ongoing funding for threat assessments and identification services and supports for students with mental health needs, and also that the legislature monitor the work of TRS in developing regional consumer-based healthcare plans so that we can attempt to provide more affordable healthcare options through school district employees across the state through the TRS Active Care Plan by the start of the 20-21 plan year. It's hard to say 2020, 21. So the 2021 plan year, which would begin next September. So those are our priorities. There's more detail around all of those in the separate sections. We do have separate sections for accountability, also for safety and security, for finance, for school choice, and for pre-K. And so with that, we'll be happy to answer questions that anyone has about anything specific in, in the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Ms. Walton.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. I just want to point out one thing that we did add when we considered this, and that was under school finance, under qualified workforce. I think most of us, if not all of us, were unpleasantly surprised when we were working on the budget last year, and we discovered that nurses, counselors, and librarians had been left out of the category of teacher. And so they were unable to be considered for the little bit larger pay raise for the people who were five years and more into it. So I'm very pleased to see that we have added into our interim agenda that we will try to be able to include those groups again because we feel like they are teachers, they are very integral to the academic process, and we think they should be included as teachers when it comes to pay. So I just want to thank everybody and point that out, that that has been added this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Will Banks.
Ms. Walton, I would like to also concur with your thoughts on that and the importance of keeping those groups included on the pay that they all deserve. Also want to point out, thank my colleagues who've worked on this, as well as Ms. Powell and her staff and our legislative consultant. It is comprehensive and is well organized and well thought out. It hits all the highlights. It's a little overwhelming looking at it all on the four pages that it is. But I do also want to point out the great work that our marketing department did in making it digestible, an easy, digestible, fun to look at, as much as a legislative agenda could be fun to look at. But they knocked it out of the park and made it really well organized and easy to read and digest. So Ms. Foster, kudos to your team, and thanks for doing this. This is really going to help. So I could go on and on, but we'll have more time to talk about this in the future. But, but it is comprehensive. So I don't think we left anything out in terms of maybe highlighting those top priorities, which we've done at the top here in your draft. Thanks for the work.
Thank you. It's our hope that with this marketing piece, this will be an easy leap behind when we go to Austin or we're meeting with legislators, that we can leave this with them. And I think they'll be much more apt to hang on to it than they have just our, our standard eight and a half by 11 document, four-page document in years past.
Plus, when you see the students on front, how can you say no? Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Mays. I'm, I'm really pleased to see all these priorities, but the two that really jump out are the extra attention to go towards the students with mental health issues. I think that's very important for us to look at, and, and also for the TRS, for maybe be able to do something better for our, our faculty and, and staff as far as insurance. So thank you so much for putting those in there.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays, and thank you to the committee and Ms. Powell and our legislative consultants, the help on this. Ms. Powell, let me ask the question, and we, we say this every year on legislative, the interim agenda doesn't need to include everything, right? It's not our broad overarching statement. So this piece is awesome. I'm a little worried it's a lot of information. And how do I say this nicely? I don't know if legislators will read all this. And I don't know if they'll know which bills to write and create from this creation. So I, I think it's really good having the priorities on there. And so with the priorities, let me just ask the question. I get worried anytime we tell them to monitor our study because that usually means they don't have to do anything, right? And the interim is about what are the things you need to be creating and writing bills for, prepping for the next legislative session to go on there. And I worry, the two I, you know, the first two I can tolerate, the four, and we're just going off the priorities, studying and recommend effective legislative solutions for appropriate ongoing funding for threat assessments, supports of student mental health needs, and then that one, and then the other one is monitor work of TRS to develop regional consumer-based. I would ask us to consider being more aggressive on our verbiage. You know, with that TRS, we're monitoring that, and we just changed it from the last session to let us out. I think we need to still give them the option of the two. And I agree with Mr. Cale and our staff recommendation. We do think this is probably our best option, but if that option still comes up, we need to say, hey, we're still willing to get out, but you guys have squashed this, but we're still, we're still willing to look at that from that perspective. So I would ask us to consider maybe a little more aggressive language, if that's the word to say it. The other piece I don't see in here, and I think it's going to be a lot of discussion point in this next legislative session, is I don't see anything discussing special education legislation. And I do think there will be a fair amount of special ed legislation coming up in this next session to monitor and go through. So I would just ask if we could ask, is there any, you know, as we know, it's, can be a very legislative focus. They can create new rules, which can cause lots of different pieces of work. And so I would just ask us, to think about, are we missing something in there of monitoring? And as I look through, you know, it's, you know, I see some from some others, evaluate strategies, approve special ed in public schools, you know, Texas Education Agency has a corrective action plan that they're going through and working on to improve special ed. I just worry, we, I don't feel like we have much in there about special ed in our agenda.
So we, we can do some more work on that area. There is one item. And it's kind of, it, I don't know that it does all of what you're wanting. It's under school finance, under the student achievement section, the last bullet, reject legislation that imposes financial responsibility or penalty on school districts to cure the state's prior policy limiting the identification for special ed services. So that's the one and only thing specifically called out. We can, we can do a little more legwork there.
And Ms. Powell, if I ask, what, what do you think, you know, and listen, we've got to build this for different legislators, some Senate, some, some in the House, and for representatives, you know, what legislation do we think they're going to bring about from this? I guess that's my question, like what?
Related to special ed in particular, or all?
Related to the whole, the whole piece.
Okay, so some of the thinking at this point is that there will not be nearly as much done in the legislature this next session.
Agreed.
For public ed. They feel like they devoted, you know, the vast majority of time and energy and money in this past session to House Bill III and to other matters related to public ed. There may be some additional legislation around safety and security. There could be some tweaks in the accountability area, but even that, I think they wanted to try to leave alone and handle changes more through rulemaking. So I don't have a real good answer for that at this point.
I, I probably wouldn't disagree with that.
No, I was just going to add that we had a TSA session where we were building an agenda, very similar process, I think. And, and really, the, the big priority, which we can word differently, I think, to your point, Mr. Hogg, is to sustain HB3 funding. And it's not to try, it's not to monitor it, it's to sustain it and find ways, legislative ways, to require it to be sustained. And that's like the priority when we boil everything down, you know, in terms of TSA. And then the other one is, is TRS, as has already been mentioned, is another, that those two rise to the top of the list really fast because those two are the ones that have huge impacts in terms of the future, and, and then for our employees as well.
One, one point I might add in that discussion around monitoring what TEA does with provisions of House Bill III, there's a lot of concern throughout the state on the part of finance administrators and superintendents and others about the amount of authority that TEA and the commissioner, very honestly, has to, to make rules around provisions in House Bill III. And we don't even know all of the outcomes of that yet. And so, you know, that's, you know, we can, we can work on that language, but it is important that they maintain pretty close oversight of what's going on to implement House Bill III.
And the last question I was going to ask, and it goes off right off Dr. Kavassos, is I think the most important thing is long-term sustain of HB3. We all discuss as a board, some of our other colleagues who are very, around the state, who are very focused legislatively, we're all worried that not this next session, the one after, is when we lose some of this funding for HB3. And then that's when you start getting into rifts, you start getting into problems with these salary bumps and increases. And as someone, a couple of us up here who have had, gone through a 7% cut from our budget in the past, in 2011, it's miserable. It's the worst vote I've ever made on this board. So I'm probably a little gun-shy, more cautious about that for those reasons. So I think having that to be very vocal and strong in our language, and Ms. Walton, a little birdie in my ear, was just mentioned, should we reward these, reorder them, I'm sorry, reorder them? And I, I would agree with that, Ms. Walton. I think it's probably a good idea. Let's put our most important thing to first because legislators and legislative staff have a lot of information that comes into them. We know they're only going to read probably the first thing and the last thing. So I think we look at some of those things to make them as clear as possible of what we are trying to do. No, it's not a major order, it's just small. So that's what I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. I was going to, as Chair of the Governance Committee, chime in and say that we welcome, this is a discussion item, and we welcome all the feedback. And I'm always, Mr. Hogg, as you know, happy to make the language a little bit sharper and, and more aggressive. I wanted to highlight a few things here because I do think that this is a valuable tool, not just, not just for us to keep, keep our internal board priorities straight, but also to educate the public on the things that we're interested in, and also give an understanding of what role we play in the education system in Texas. Because, you know, we just went through a bond campaign, had lots of discussions with teachers and people in the community, and I heard over and over again about complaints that people had about the education system in general that are things that, that we have to deal with at this level, that we don't actually have direct authority over. So we can't, for example, fix TRS active care, although we very much wish we would, and we've been at the forefront of advocating for changes there for a long time, and, and I think made some major progress this year, and moved the ball on that discussion. We can't do things about high-stakes testing. We can advocate to, for Austin to stop taking authority away from us and transferring it to themselves, or even worse, to an elected TEA commissioner who bureaucratically makes these administrative rules that are going to govern very important aspects of what we do here that we essentially have very little say over. And so those things are in here. We are advocating for our constituents here the best way that we know how, but sometimes that means taking action in Austin and trying to convince them to, to come out our way. I do want to focus on a couple things just to point out. This is largely our legislative agenda from the last session. We did add a few things in here that I think are really important to, to use as discussion items during this interim period where the legislature is not in sessions in the hope that they do come into the next legislative session with some idea of, of some proposals that could make some meaningful change. And the ones that I really want to highlight, and I know this is very early in a discussion, there was a lot of change this year on full-day pre-K with HB3, but I think we, we've put it in here. I think the time is, is to start talking about full universal pre-K. The research on the effect that pre-K has on students being able to start school on parity with their peers is just overwhelming at this point, and the sooner that we can expand access to that, the better. And we know that we're going to need meaningful help from the state to make that happen because of the, the magnitude of the problem there. And so that's in here to start that discussion. Another thing, going back to local authority, been in the news a lot lately that the TEA commissioner has authorized state takeover of Houston ISD, largest school district in the state, essentially, at least on the surface, on the basis of one campus in that district not making enough progress for a certain amount of time despite the size of that district. And I think for people who care about democratic accountability at the local level, the people in this room, you're my constituents, you're our constituents, and if you don't like the job that we're doing, you can go vote us out. And in Austin, and particularly the Texas Education Agency, is taking the position now that it, in my opinion, it can decide what's best for local school districts and replace their entire school board, even though in the case of the Houston ISD board, there were new board members just elected to the board. And even though the overall academic performance of that school district earned a B this year despite significant challenges with poverty in some areas of that city. So that is something that is on our radar, that we want our legislators to consider very carefully about whether or not the authority to run school districts should be in the hands of, of you, of our local constituencies here in the district, or if it should be transferred to appointed bureaucrats in Austin. And I think that that's an important discussion for the legislature to start having now because they are the ones that authorized it just a few years ago. And so I think that that change has the potential to disproportionately impact districts that have high proportions of students coming from poverty and of color. Because if we're going to use the failure to achieve certain results on a state test that has been shown over and over and over again to correlate very strongly with socioeconomic status, then we really have a problem with the TEA commissioner's claimed authority because it will be disproportionately used on districts that predominantly are, are made up of students from socio-economically disadvantaged backgrounds and that have high concentrations of students of color. And I think that's a very serious consideration that this district has been on top of and following for a while, and we're going to, to push our legislators to do something about that. And then the last thing I want to talk about, and this is another public education aspect of this, is we have a, we always include with our legislative agendas on the last page an exhibit of sample unfunded mandates. And so this unfunded mandate is essentially something that we're told by the state or somebody that we have to do, and it costs us money to do, but we're not provided the money to do it with. And so here are some samples. This is not to say that we wish we didn't have to do these things. Having a 22-to-1 student-to-teacher ratio for kindergarten through fourth grade is a good, is probably a good thing. And so we, we're not saying that these are things we wish we could get rid of tomorrow, some of them might be, but that there- some of them might be, but that there is a cost, and we've documented that cost here of things that we are having to do because we're required to do it by law, that we don't have funding to match it, and that we have to take from local funds to do that. And so, the sample unfunded mandates, and we're saying sample because this is not all of the unfunded mandates, but just the top, I think we have the top 19 here, or a sample of 19 here, it's almost, it's 70, over $70 million, which is over 13% of our budget. And so, there are lots of great things we could do with $70 million extra that we could put towards, you know, reducing class sizes, towards paying teachers better, towards increasing the healthcare subsidy that we provide for our teachers. But these are things that, that we have to use the money instead for, and so, we've documented them here. And in my time on the Board, it seems like every time the legislature meets, there are more of these that come down that aren't even listed here. And so, we do track those, and we do ask that our state legislators try to minimize the impact of those where they can. And they don't always hear us, but sometimes they do, and we're going to keep pushing for some help on that front. And so, welcome, welcome comments from both my colleagues and the public as we meet over the next month to refine this, and we'll be bringing this back for an action item in December.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chapa. Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. I want to thank our Board Governance Committee as well, as Justin said, chaired by Mr. Chapa, also Ms. Walton and Dr. Reich. Thank you very much. What I find very interesting is, I'm just thinking of all of the, all of the rubber of our tires that we wore out driving back and forth to Austin advocating for public education. And what I'm excited about with us doing this interim legislative thing is, while we have all of those ideas and thoughts on our minds that we became very passionate about because of the amount of time everybody was spending to talk to all of our legislators to make sure that we were down there, that it's still very strong, and I think it automatically kind of corrects the aggressive tone, maybe, if I could use that word, a passionate aggressive tone of the things that we really would like to see come from our legislatures. And one thing that I really don't like is, is people feeling like they should be patted on the back for doing something that they should do anyway. And supporting public education is something that should be done anyway. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Powell.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Good job.
Next on our agenda is open, open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any cards?
No, ma'am.
Okay. No cards, we will continue our agenda with our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason. I'd like to share some information about what's going on in our school district. First, most of our campuses held Veterans Day programs or events, and you'll see some pictures there, to help say thank you to our veterans, many of them parents and grandparents, but also staff members and teachers. Our students learn so much around Veterans Day, about our country, our history, our armed services, and much more. So, one more time, thank you to all our veterans and to all our schools that are honoring our veterans during Veterans Day. So, you see some nice, nice honoring veterans pictures there. Ellis Elementary celebrated its 30th anniversary last week with an evening that featured former Ellis staff and principals, as well as current and former students. It was a great evening to celebrate Ellis's 30th year and their accomplishments and their history, and it's a great job by the committee that put together the celebration of this event, Ellis teachers. So, thank you one more time for making it a special evening. Last Friday, our district was the beneficiary of an incredible, kind gesture, and that is kindness benches that will be in every elementary school in Arlington. And the person you see on that picture is a Sam Houston High School graduate, former graduate of Sam Houston High School, Tashonda Brown Duckett, and she is now the CEO of Chase Consumer Banking. And she came to Arlington because she has a foundation, the Otis and Rosie Brown Foundation, that's named after her parents. And she provided a fundraising opportunity that has been very successful, by the way, so far, to raise money for a kindness bench for every elementary school. And as you know, as part of our bond implementation, every elementary school will have new playgrounds, covered playgrounds and equipment. And so, this bench will be at every, one bench at every elementary school. It really is over $130,000 commitment by this foundation and the fundraising. So, I want to thank her for this wonderful gift and for a wonderful experience on Friday, both the luncheon where she was honored, but the foundation event as well, and her generosity, but probably more important, her energy around the things that she does and how she lives her life. So, a great example, former Sam Houston High School graduate, former Arlington ISD student. So, thank you to her. On Tuesday, we had our first teacher-focused group for this year at the PDC, and this group was specifically focused on gathering input and developing our teacher leadership pathways. And we're going to bring that information in the spring, the details about that, this is the beginning stages of that. And this made a great opportunity because our teachers were the ones leading these sessions for other teachers and how, how we can promote teacher leadership in the district. So, thank you to Arlington Collegiate's teacher, Jennifer Fuller, Young Junior High's Courtney Boyd, Peach Elementary, Irene Bustamante, and Patrick Elementary, Leslie Skinner, for their work because they led these sessions, and they did an exceptional job. And we got a lot of great feedback. You'll be hearing more about in the spring. Next, a couple of quick reminders. Our fall transfer window opened this week and will be open through 4:00 PM on Tuesday, December 3rd. FAQs are frequently asked questions, and the links are available at AIST.net/transfers. Also, our high school specialized program applications are open through January 30th, and information on all these programs are on our website. And we already have a volume accumulating of transfer requests, so if you're interested, this is the timeline. And finally, happy Thanksgiving to all our AIST family. Hope you have a safe and restful, enjoyable break. I want to thank Adams Elementary, that's where I spent part of the day today, serving. And yes, that's a Texas Longhorn apron. However, you know, I didn't want to point that out too much, but that's what it is. And then I had lunch with some fourth graders as well, and the principal, you see Leslie Rhodes there as well, and they had a great conversation and shared some very, very funny experiences that they've had. And so, I just appreciate Adams Elementary, and I appreciate everyone that works in our school districts, all our students and staff and our community for a great school district that we have. So, thankful for that. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have any school board reports? I see no lights. I would like to just say, happy Thanksgiving. I hope that everyone enjoys their time off, enjoy time with your family, students take a breather, teachers take a breather. I just want to say I am very thankful to be able to serve such an amazing school district with amazing leaders, amazing teachers, and amazing students. I'm very grateful. With that being said, Ms. Secretary, oh, and I'd also like to wish safe traveling to our high school football teams. Go, go Lamar.
We have one in town.
Go Martin, we've got one in town. Marv, go Martin High School, go Bowie High School, go Arlington High School. Ms. Fowler, did you?
I was just going to also wish good luck to all of our teams tomorrow night.
Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
No.
Okay, thank you. Well, very much, with that being said, I would like to say before our students leave, if y'all need for us to sign anything for you, for any credit, let us know. Mr. Hogg would love to grab a picture with y'all, if y'all like to take a picture with him. Other than that, y'all have a great evening. We are adjourned at 8:26.